Thank all you guests for being here today. I know that nobody decided to speak. Let's get going through that part and get to our information items. You want to speak?
Always. I did.
The doctor's picking up the end. It's only picking up the beginning.
No, I am.
Okay.
Just like I mentioned.
All right, information items.
Okay, first of all, each year we always go over student enrollment compared in year to year on how we ended up with the enrollment for each district, I mean each campus. If you look at, we take the numbers from last year. Our active student enrollment was 1442. This year, our active student enrollment ended up at 1426. That's 16 fewer students overall than ending up this year over last year. If you remember, last year we had a huge group. But also, we have, how many do we graduate together? Seventy-eight? So that will be our last small class for a while there. So anyway, I always want to give those numbers so that everyone knows what those are. And the next thing is accounts payable for May. I don't know if anyone has any questions over that. If so, feel free to address those questions at this point. We'll answer any questions you might have. I know you've had time to look through this. Okay, if we don't have any questions, then I will ask Mr. Shawn to address us with our high school UIL academic success this year.
Okay, about a month ago, I came to you and told you that we had completed our UIL academics in Austin and scored 98 points and was saying in first place that the speaking events were the only thing that were left. We did not have any speakers there. Another school had, I don't know if they had one, they had three, and they scored double what they had. So they called it with us and won first. But last week, we did receive the runner-up that I have over here on the table, a credit conference by those kids. I'm very, very proud of them, and I'm very happy that we have a runner-up trophy and put in a trophy case for UIL academics. And thank all of you for what you did to contribute to that.
Thank you, Coach. That's quite an accomplishment for our kids, and they certainly set the tone for the young ones coming up, so.
Yeah, they showed it could be done, that's the biggest thing.
That's right. That's great accomplishment. Okay, we can move on to consent.
All right, consent items. Unless there's something somebody wants to pull out of there, we can approve all of those as long as they're to be published. Anything you need about it? All right, can I get a motion to approve consent items? I'll make a motion. I got Dr. Ward Chat, second call.
Yep.
Any conversation or discussion? All in favor? All right. Discussion items.
Okay, as I put in the board packet, we've had an individual approach as regarding a purchasing the driveway for his property, and it's, it adjoins our property that we have at Hag Farm out there on 1252. And it is landlocked for him. You can see on the map, he's kind of landlocked and needs to have access to the property that he's purchased. He's owned his property for quite a while, but would like to have access to have a driveway running back there where he has a home. That is something that I totally know we, you know, get the board's opinion on that, whether we want to look at selling a driveway for him, put a driveway to enter his property, or he'll have to look at another route. The property, also, his property adjoins road frontage on 1252 to the west, as you can see on there. The problem with that, that's all wooded, so that's why he's approaching us with the property that runs alongside our Hag Farm, because it's much cleaner property. So in looking at that, I would like to get some direction from the board on that. If you would like for us to pursue visiting with this or moving forward to see what the situation they call for. Keep in mind, I have no intentions of the district needing to, without any money as far as Ag up, as far as looking at the sale of any property or the surveys and all, he would need to pay for those surveys to be done. But that's something up to the board. I just want some direction on that.
I don't know how feasible it is, but Stacy and I talked about it. If y'all can see where I'm pointing, he wants access from 1252 right here to come up to his property right here. But he owns this great big L that sticks out in the middle of all our property. Again, he may absolutely say it's not a good idea or not, but I almost want to swap him. We'll give you access if you'll give us this little thing that sticks out right here.
And that's certainly.
You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Like a square block?
Yeah, yeah. We're not losing anything. We just get that L sticking out.
So does he own the 28, I'm sorry, I was writing something. Did he own the 28-500 and the 28-4962?
He does not.
So he comes in behind them too?
Yeah, correct.
And then somebody else owns this little landlocked spot right here?
Yeah, he owns the 28-488, and that L shape for some reason goes through our, goes into our Hag Farm there. But like Tony was saying, a trade-off on that would certainly be feasible, would make sense for both of us to do that if he's willing to do that. So that's something that, you know, we all.
At his expense of figuring out where the lines are, tell him to go figure it out and come back to us with a proposal, and we'll look at it. That's my, that's.
Yeah.
Would he have to get a survey to do that?
Yes, you have to get a survey.
I don't say that at his expense, he go get a survey to bring it back to us, then we can discuss it.
What about title on his? We'd have to find out if he had good title.
Mm-hmm.
So he'd have title, some title to secure also.
Yeah, that's just something that we have. I feel like he does, because he's not had this property for a very long period of time.
He's had briefly when all the laws are in place to come, he'd have to.
So, but that's one thing, if there's no clear title, then you don't go there. But those are all things that we would need to check out. And even if that is something that we are to pursue, it doesn't happen until, you know, we come back with all the negotiations and this board takes action as it works, so.
So we're talking about 10-foot runway? 10-foot runway, 20-foot runway? Is that part of it?
I'm thinking 10. It's not anywhere in writing at this point, but I'm thinking 10.
I like the idea of swapping the property. I'm squaring my piece up. Somebody probably needs to go look at this piece and make sure that.
Yeah, and.
There's not something going on there.
Right.
There's some reason why we should break these. That was nice, and we had to go around the tree and get this.
Could be all well packed or anything.
And there are, you know, you know what's out there. So, okay, any other items to look at on that?
I kind of like the idea of a swap also, only because I don't like the idea of an outright sale. That opens up a door to now everyone, including myself, who happens to have adjoining property in the school district.
Did I hear those things right here?
Why? But what I'm saying is just, you know, it's kind of like, that makes sense. You know, there's this weird piece of land that's obstructing our use of our land. So, you know, there'd be a benefit, I think, to us.
Yeah, I don't think we're losing that trade-off. If we can swap a runway for that little thing sticking out there.
I think it'd be good, I would also caution, I think he should pay all the expenses. I caution letting him bring those documents to us. I would like a attorney and, you know, I mean, I would like to make sure those documents are prepared correctly.
Right.
And I'm sure there's probably some strange rules that apply to public lands, which our land probably falls under, so.
There are, and that's, that's part of why, you know, we want to bring it to you, this board, before we even look into it at all. Because it's not just as simple as, okay, y'all know what I'm saying, you know, that's not that simple. But, you know, if that's something that, as far as the vision of the board can see that would benefit us, then that's what we lose looking to and bring that information back to y'all, and y'all, they want to make the decision on the A and A, on making the swap or the sale, or whatever it may be, I'll be up there. Okay, anything else other than that? Andre, do you have that in writing?
The board would like for Mr. Bryce to move forward with.
Okay.
Do we investigate lensing? Lens walk? Ring drive?
As long as he doesn't say move forward on a sale.
I'm just saying lens walk.
Yeah.
Just move forward with Navy lens walk, so we know that we're not voting right this time.
Right. Okay. If there aren't any other questions, then we can move on to approve budget. Propose budget. Mr. Daniel, would you take that?
Thank you, Bryce. Each one of you had, showed me at your place a four-page document that's our update for The first page is the same recap that we had at the budget workshop on May 31st, just with updated numbers and the expenditures. The payroll budget, after I got the information on some of the people that have come and gone and got the updated numbers on the replacements, the overall payroll budget for the general fund went down $27,847. That includes a little bit of cushion because there's some of the new employees that are disciplined, I don't know whether they're going to be taking our health insurance or not, so I'll put a cushion in there to cover for that. The non-payroll budget is down $51,535. I've got the recap working down by campus and departments behind it, and then to show you what the change was, and go to the third page, and it's based in three areas. The biggest of which was after our meeting on the 31st. My take on the consensus was that the stage lights weren't as much of a necessity to the board, so I took those out of the budget.
Heard Miss Barnes' feelings.
Sorry.
Said you heard Miss Barnes' feelings.
This last week, Coach Shawn received a letter from Ms. Kirkland informing us that one of our young ladies, who was running for vice, state vice president of Anchor Club and had come in second, was now going to be able to be vice president because the individual that was president moved out of state. So when the president moves out of state, one that was vice president now becomes president, so she's now vice president and has the torture of having to go to the national convention in Las Vegas.
In Las Vegas?
Mm-hmm. One of our principals, whose name I won't mention, he said that he would do that and go with her if it's on his hands.
Coach Shawn, who is it?
He's the one going.
Well, I am the owner.
Millard?
Millard.
Millard.
And the other small change was that in negotiations with the company that has the software that we're going to use for dealing with our 504 students, Ms. Yates was able to squeeze them down about $535 more than what we were working for. So those three things netted us the $51,000 that the budget has down. And that's the only changes that I have, that I have made to this point. But still, we'll, I'll come back to you after we fill all the positions, and we might or might not have to change the budget for payroll purposes at that point, because we still have, you know, just ten maybe spots to fill that we don't have, 25 at the end to still fill. We don't know whether the salaries will be higher or lower than the person that's serving. We'll add answering any other questions, Shawn.
Y'all good?
All right, we'll put action items, 7A District of Innovation Plan.
Okay, Ms. Yates has been working on the District of Innovation Plan meeting with the DEIC, and I will turn it over to her to cover that.
April 10th, the board voted to pursue, to appoint a committee to develop the District of Innovation Plan, so on October, uh, October 17th and 18th, DEIC committee met to discuss and develop a plan. And on June 7th, we met and voted on the final draft, which was unanimously, we unanimously voted for the plan. As you see, you had it in your packets, our innovations that we want to start off with, with our basic plan, and please keep in mind, at any time, at any time, if there's anything that we would like to look at as far as adding concessions, we can talk about that and bring it to the board, and the board can approve that or not approve it. Innovations we would like to start off with is school start date. And current law states that a school district may not begin student instruction before the fourth Monday of August. We would like to begin instruction no earlier than the third Monday of August, and this will, as we have talked about, you know, prior, this will, this change will create better flexibility in the development of the annual school calendar, and as well as allowing more opportunities and scheduling meaningful and balanced staff development days. It'll allow the district to move instructional days that occur after state-manded, mandated testing dates to the front of the school year, front end, and then we'll be able to provide opportunity for an equitable balance of days through the, each of the three-six-week grading period in the first semester. The second innovation that we would like to propose in our plan is certification, which covers a few broad areas as far as certification goes. The principals can submit a letter to the superintendent for a request for local certification that will allow a current certified teacher to teach outside of their certified area in hard-to-fill areas, and we want to be specific in our strategies. Principal must specify in writing the reason for the request and document what credentials the certified teacher possesses that would qualify this individual to teach the proposed subject. Innovation or strategy number two, the current certification requirement tests, or requirement sets limitations for the district's options to hire professionals with work-related experience or degrees to teach a variety of courses, like from the CTE and STEM-related courses needed throughout the district. In order to maximize opportunities for students to take such courses, the district will consider the qualifications necessary to create a local requirement for these courses instead of the requirements set forth in the education code. The exemption will allow the district to consider part-time, part-time professionals to teach courses, opportunities for professionals to transition from work-related jobs to the teaching profession, which would be one that we'd like to offer certification process. Increase the number of the CTE and STEM-type courses available, and then opportunities for trade-related professionals to teach related courses, such as in your CTE, like the welding courses and such. The district will also would like to have the flexibility in strategy number three to recognize out-of-state certifications, and that is when we can get an out-of-state teacher that is certified in teaching, they are automatically granted a one-year permit to teach, a one-year certificate. Sometimes the process of getting those certification exams takes a little longer, and so we would like as a district to have that option to go, campus principal can submit to the superintendent a request to allow certified out-of-state teachers to continue to teach that course or grade, at a course or grade level beyond the one-year state temporary certificate requirement, and the superintendent will then approve the request if they feel that individual is an asset to the students. And the state-issued temporary certificates will renew locally for an additional year with a two-year maximum time to pass those state certification tests, so they would have a two-year maximum time to do that. With all this, the superintendent will report this action of any sort to the Sabine ISD Board trustees at the first board meeting following these assignments if those occur. And then a teacher certification waiver or any type of paperwork, application will not be submitted, or will not be required to be submitted to TDA based on having a District of Innovation Plan in place in our district. So those would help out in certain situations in case we run into those questions.
Ms. Yates, when we first talked about the District of Innovation, or yeah, District of Innovation Plan, I made a comment then that I hoped your committee would think outside of the box and throw every possible scenario out there that might benefit.
And we did. And we did.
And I understand, I'm not, I'm not, this is a good start. You mentioned at the earlier, the onset of your presentation today that the plan can still be modified.
Almost definitely, yeah.
And so along those lines, is there a scheduled meeting, you know, like once a month you guys are need?
No, sir. There's not, there's not. What we wanted to do was get a basic plan in place, something that we can build on with ideas. They're already coming up with, you know, when we approved this plan and when they approved this plan, they had ideas that they wanted to start looking at and working on, but as you know, we're in a kind of a time crunch.
Sure.
We needed to get a basic plan put in place and get our calendar in place as well. So there are things that we're thinking about right now, so, but no, as a scheduled, we don't have a schedule made out, but though, you know, we have the option and opportunity to meet at any time when we do get there. So there are some things that we can start working on, and then we, you know, and then if there's ideas that you want us to look at, we will be able to sit down and look at those.
But if a committee member, or two or three of the committee members say, hey, you know, let's look at this.
Yes.
Call meeting.
That is the beauty of this District of Innovation, because it allows us to go through a process of adding, of taking away, if we want to take it away, we can. So that's, this is just the beginning of something, you know, that we can, might even be.
Thank you.
If, if something that gets approved, we do this tonight, we vote on it, six months down the road, the board says, you know what, that's not working, then what's the procedure for saying nevermind, disregard, we don't want to wait up tomorrow?
We'll take it to the board.
Well, I'm saying the board is the one that made that.
The board makes.
Observation of we looking at this and we're nothing, and that's working, majority of the board has already come to the conclusion that this is not something we want to do. What happens?
And it's ultimately your choice, and you can call.
We put it on the agenda and say.
You can put it on the agenda, yes, that is in y'all's control.
So we approve, we deny, we are completely in charge.
You are the final answer to everything that goes on with this plan.
Okay.
Does there have to be a waiting period? Let's say the group, the committee comes up with some more innovations that they'd like to try, is there like a 30-day waiting period kind of thing, or can it be just like?
The committee would, would meet and come to a consensus and a majority vote on that. They would present it to the board, board would have the action of approving or not approving.
And it can be started the next day?
Yes, and once, if y'all approve this tonight, it's effective immediately.
Well, I'm saying lines of what Bart was saying, I was just kind of curious, and I understand this is an introductory plan, but at some point, do you foresee having some type of effective measurements, effectiveness measurement, looking at the plans and.
Nothing like that is in place, but, you know, that's not to say that it can't be something to look at.
Right, you know, saying what we're doing is working great, and we have these measures, these criteria to look at.
All right, so why do you motion to?
I have a question for Ms. Yates. Ms. Yates, how's the, the first innovation you have, what did the DEIC come up with as, how does that specifically help our students? Calendar change?
Well, I think the strategies proposed, the three strategies proposed in the plan states that. In, as far as this earlier start date, the district can move the instructional days that occur after the mandated state dates, dates to the front of the school year, okay? And then the earlier start date will provide an opportunity for an equitable balance of days in that first semester. Sometimes we have to cut our first semester short because of things, and so we can move more days and then balance those days out in those three-six-week grading periods.
It's a lot harder to get the same balance of days, the first semester, second semester, because of Christmas break coming in there, and then in the spring, you deal with all the testing dates and all. So the high school staff, like most high schools around, they want to finish that first semester prior to Christmas break, not coming back after Christmas break and finishing. So that will allow us to have more instructional days at the beginning to even up those two semesters.
If you, when we're, just an example, when we're trying to, to develop the next school year's calendar, when we, when we sit down in past years, those days for our full six-week, full three-six-week grading period, most usually always runs over into the next semester in January when we come back from Christmas break. With all of the exams that are going on, that first semester has to be cut short because they don't like to have to come back and test after a two-week Christmas break.
The rest of the story about that is though, the reason it's set for the fourth Monday in August has nothing to do with education, has everything to do with tourists. Tourist people got pushed to the first Monday, fourth Monday.
I don't think the tourist people care about our students like we do. My, my point is this, is that in that second semester, we're going to lose days, and especially, I know with, with my kids, the second semester, there's so many activities going on that they lose days already for. A lot of activities, you know, that, that aren't the same in, in the first semester, and so my concern would be that they're, you know, they're losing days that, on top of days that they're already losing, that we're not accounting for, but was that, was that talked about at all in the committee?
Well, I actually lose the days. I don't know, I don't know how you figure.
We're just going to have more days available.
We're balancing.
Well, you're moving, you're moving days from here to here, so if you're moving those, then.
You're putting, you're actually moving days and maximizing, maximizing the instruction in a, in a better place.
Before they get to this, like they take finals in December, in the first semester.
It's the same with my.
So they've all had some more instructional time before those finals than they normally have right now. Like right now, they're short.
In the first semester.
And then the second semester, you will have just a little bit less, but.
So there's less days than the first.
Well, you still have, you still have last week in May, I think the proposed calendar says that the last day is May 24th, and we're usually getting out that next week in June. You're making that last week, you're putting that last week in May in August.
It's what you're doing.
Moving it from the end to the front end.
The other question I have is, on, on the second innovation that you guys have, where did the DEIC come up with the wording for, on the number four, where it says the superintendent will report the action to the board at the first board meeting following the assignments? Where, where did you guys come up with that?
Well, we didn't really come up with it, kind of, we, as far as, it says John will report that to you. If there's any changes, that's what he has to do, is to report it to the board.
Right, and I, and I understand that. I looked through a lot of the, the current innovation plans that are on file, and none of them had any wording similar to that, the closest ones that I could. The closest ones that I could find had wording that, that made sure that the, it was explicit that he informed them before the, the hire actually took place.
Well, you could press-
This is, this is not talking about hiring. This is talking about assignment.
It's not hiring.
Assignment? No. Now, the hiring, you, y'all are doing that. It is done before. And assignment, if they have to move or whatever, that's, that's referring to that. And it's, what it's saying is the superintendent has to inform the board if that happens, of course. But the hiring, that, that won't happen, you know, without y'all, without the board hiring.
My point is, that's already in policy. So, why would, why would the wording be important in here? That's my question. Why did the D E I C-
There's nothing magical about the wording. It's just that it's the proper, proper process to go through to make sure you're informed. You have, y'all have, y'all, if you were, if we were to do this, the board has already approved that we can go through these assignment changes if needed, if that's, if we reach that point. It's nothing to be, as far as approved by the board, but the board needs to be informed by the superintendent.
And that's just to make sure that the superintendent, that there's a chain there of communication, you know, with the superintendent and the board.
As the-
If you hadn't approved this plan, that, I mean, then he would, y'all have already done this prior to us doing this with, with the approval of the plan.
We haven't approved the plan.
I'm just saying, it, well, you know what I mean. If this plan was approved, that's the same.
Right. And we're discussing, that's why. I just, I don't see the significance, and you guys, obviously, that was a, an effort. It was a thought for it to be in there. And, and of all the plans that I looked at, especially the ones that-
Well, keep in mind that each and every District of Innovation Plan is, is different. And there's not a, there's not an exact format to follow. Each, you'll find, every one of them is going to be different in some form or fashion.
I understand, I looked at a lot of them.
And I talked to T E A numerous times, and I've talked to past, numerous times. And there's not a specific wording, there's not a specific format that we have to put this plan in. Now, we did let them look over it and make sure that everything was good as far as legalities of it, but there's not a specific way we have to do this plan.
For me, I appreciate y'all going with extra effort to add those details, even though they may not be needed or other districts may not include the innovation. It certainly doesn't change anything. Doesn't hurt anything, it helps, so, I appreciate y'all doing that.
And you're busy.
Just, just helps by just one more little area that we're, you know, we've set up, a set of processes.
It's unnecessary.
Do you want them to take it out?
Let's just get to the question. Would it make you happier if we took out number four?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Take it out.
Yeah. We can, we can, before we do-
But if you take it out-
No, it's okay. I actually agree with it's, Mr. Taylor, if I can, maybe, I, I think I understand your concern, but it's, if you read number three, if, if this is adopted, number three gives the authority to do those temporary licenses. Number four is just saying, you know, let's tell the board we did it, as opposed to, we just did it.
We just did it in the board's opinion.
So, so in that context, I think it's better, I'd rather have the report instead of, oh, did you know that we just hired someone for two years that doesn't have a certification?
I'd rather have it beforehand.
Well, you did use that permission beforehand by proving this plan. That's the permission we have.
No, I'm telling you, I'd rather have it in writing that he alerts us beforehand before we make those assignments, or before we make those hires.
You're talking about assignments or hiring?
Both.
Well, hiring, he has it, he has to, this is just the signs.
Okay. Yeah.
So, you want him to, I'm telling you, send employee A from over here in the welding shop over to the electrical shop.
I think that, you know-
Before happens?
No.
We've never done it that way.
I want him to run the school.
Yeah, that's hard. That's not fair job.
To navigate operation, yeah.
Now, hiring, yes.
Yes.
We are, he can decide whoever he wants to, wherever he wants to. And that's all it says, is that, if he reads it, just to give us communication.
Because he doesn't have to communicate it. He doesn't have to, but we put it in there and then he will have to.
I'm fine with taking it out.
It's not going to change anything.
We would have argued that.
And that is, I'm sure, a sample that the D E I C looked at as-
Exactly. Exactly. Yeah.
Get a motion from somebody to approve everything scratched forward. Motion? Get a second?
It probably needs to be two different motions, one to scratch four-
One to scratch four?
And then-
Scratch four from the proposed?
Sure. Are you okay with that, second?
Oh, yeah, that's not-
It's not going to change anything.
Okay.
All right, parliamentarian, are we, we're scratching from something that's proposed?
So, the motion, the motion is to remove number four from the plan.
From the proposed?
We're saying that the D E I C recommended that the board vote to approve the District of Innovation Plan as presented except scratch point four.
We don't need, we don't have to have a motion to scratch something from a presentation.
No, but it's, it would at least be in the minutes that we tell him that we told him to do it.
I know that's in the minutes, and I'm just questioning because-
Just to make it cleaner, I would suggest a motion to scratch four.
All right, so, motion to scratch four from the presentation. Somebody make a motion.
Come on, Rusty.
Without a motion, we're not scratching it. It's got to make a motion. All right, we're going to make the motion to approve the D E I C as, as presented. Get a second. Got a second? Any discussion?
In all?
Yes. All in favor? Opposed? All right, next item.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the 2017-18 calendar that the campuses have had input on developing, it went through the D E I C, they voted on this calendar also. So, I know it's been out there for a while as a proposed calendar pending the board action on the District of Innovation Plan. So, any questions about the 2017-18 school calendar as presented? Same one that's been posted for quite some time.
We're just going for proposed from actual because of the passing of the innovation.
Mm-hmm.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
And, and tend to shoot myself in the foot with the question here, but, well, can you give me the justification for the three days prior to Thanksgiving? And I heard one in nineteen ninety-eight.
It didn't make sense to me then, but, so, so what's the argument for those three days? All the dist, I don't know about the districts around here, but certainly not all districts do that.
No, certainly do not.
I don't, here, it might be very common in the East Texas state.
Yeah, yeah.
It's becoming more common. It didn't used to happen at all.
Yeah, most districts you see will have that in their calendar, because generally, what has been with legislation saying you can't start prior to the Fourth Monday in August, what, what that kind of has done to school districts is, if you want to finish the school year prior to June, then you need to go, yeah, you need to go those days. If, if that doesn't bother you going in June, you can, you can be off that whole week, you know, get the kids off. That's a, that's a long haul for kids from August to November, so, that's, that's kind of the thought process there. Those three days at the beginning of that week are actually comp days where teachers may comp out of those if they get staff about, staff development. If they do not, they will have to be at work those days to have staff development. So, that's the option there. Kids are out that entire week, but teachers will be there Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday if they do not comp out. So, and in some districts, it's odd because you put it out there, and their main goal is they won't be in college. And then, another district, their main goal is they won't finish prior to June, you know, so.
Well, I hear a explanation about it is a long haul for the students.
Yes.
And then, you know, a week after they come back from Thanksgiving, you have testing. So, maybe that gives them a chance to study. Those are two answers that I think, better than the one I got in nineteen ninety, if teachers need more time to bake pies.
They got to prep for Thanksgiving.
That's, that's the logic.
We need the teachers home from the kitchen.
Again, need more time to get ready for Thanksgiving.
You know, I didn't realize that, so, I'm certainly glad I didn't say it. It's a long time.
I thought about it, and more chat, this, times have changed a lot, so, fewer kids, and there's a lot more divorced families now. And so, it does provide opportunities for kids to go visit both the other parent and then, more importantly, grandparents. That's right. And so, I think that is a benefit to children.
Yes, I think you're right.
And so, I would-
Thank you for indulging me. No coaches made it here today, right?
Yeah.
So, at some point, I would like to see us have a rule that they can't even have any kind of-
No basketball practice.
Schedule, school, anything during those holidays.
Coach out.
Well, the all-spring breaks, Christmas and Thanksgiving, so, kids are, are not kept from going to see their families, spend time with grandparents. That's true.
I think the pie explanation-
Now, every coach in these states has got a free kiss on Facebook. So, I'll stay where I'm at.
I think the pie explanation was easier with.
I need a motion to approve the calendar. All right, Ms. Pickles, second number four chat, any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? All right, see?
Okay, and looking at the budget that we've looked at a couple of times now, two or three times, yeah, opportunity to look at any salary increases for employees that, you know, in the district that, that you want to look at. Put together on one of the handouts in your package, the cost of the pay increase options. Remind, just a reminder that these are all employees that are non-teachers, all employees that are non-teachers. Teachers have, will be getting a raise on their step. And looking at the salary scale that we have, also keep in mind that that was developed according to the market value of each one of those jobs. And we try to keep those in line with the market value. And so, the pay increase options that I would like for you to look at, if you looked at a two percent, and when we say, when I say two percent, it's a two percent from that midpoint, so, it's not a true percentage rate across the board, but two percent from the midpoint would cost the district fifty-one-six, a three percent would be seventy-six-six, a four percent would be one-oh-one-six. So, again, what we've done in the past, you know, you take that in consideration too, because last year, we were at, we were at a three percent, is that correct, Kevin? With, with all of the high grades other than the clerical technical, and that was the one that got a six the year before.
Yeah, we were, for, the recommendation was approved last year was four percent for the administrative professional and clerical technical, three percent for the auxiliary staff. Because of the four-year auxiliary staff, it got to six percent.
And the administrative got one percent. Yeah, yeah, one percent, that's correct. So, trying to keep it even as it should have been, as we should have been, as it was designed, you try to keep it even. So, my proposal would be keep it across the board on all pay grades, because that's the way that the instrument was designed. Now, on which percentage point, you kind of need to look at what has been proposed by Kevin regarding the budget and seeing what can be afforded by the budget, I mean, by the district, and the cost of each percentage. Now, looking at the cost of that compared to what the budget looked like last year and what we did last year, I would feel comfortable in looking at a three percent for employees across the board. Certainly entertain any questions?
Is that your recommendations for your percentage?
Not yet.
Okay.
Want to hear any questions, suggestions, or anything pertaining to that? If not, then I would, my recommendation-
I do have a question for Mr. Yandell. Have any of these numbers been put into the budget projections that, okay, so, this would be an additional-
Correct.
The only thing that's in the budget rates wise to this point are the mandated teacher tree scale steps.
And one thing that, that we want to, to keep in mind, you know, on our budget process, we are very conservative on, on projecting revenue and, well, revenue, we don't want to do it the other way. Last year, if you remember, we adopted a budget with a deficit of two-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand dollars. This year had ended up with our normal budget expenses, not the ones that we amended because of the fraud auditor, the legal expenses, the, what was the other one, Kevin?
The box man that went-
The box man that we had replaced because of the reg. We actually would have ended up, put it up with that, Kevin? We would have ended up with a surplus, even though the budget that was balanced, that was adopted was, looks like it could have been red. So, keep that in mind also as we look at all the budget numbers. And I do want to hand this out to you just for you to look at while you're, while you're thinking about this.
I'd like to just make some comments while we're all thinking about this. Later in the agenda, we were talking about changing the in-office school district case for the insurance because of the significant jump in the insurance rates.
Correct? Not, not significantly for the jump, but he would talk about it.
Right. And, and of course, there's the, the employees' side of that increase that may be for their family, if they're taking that coverage, which we're not dealing with at all. So, and, and I, just to share with you, I, my wife is now retired, I recently had to stop working, so, we pay a little bit more attention to what we spend. And because I'm shopping with her now, I am amazed at the costs and, and just generically, I would say everything costs a heck of a lot more, although you don't hear that in the news reports or anything like that. It almost seems like, oh, my gosh, you know, everything's chugging along. It's costing more to live. And so, I feel like the raises is in order, you know, which level, I, I personally kind of feel like the three percent would be a, a nice middle ground, but I'm willing to consider any options that any of us of you would like to throw out there. But, but I just wanted to share that with you, that, it costs more to just breathe.
It does. And I totally agree with you, Dr. Morechat, that a three percent is a definite middle ground, no doubt about it. It would, you know, what would be great is to sit here and say, you know, a six percent across the board. I'd much rather be able to do that. I don't know that we would be able to do that and, and watch after taxpayers' money appropriately. I would love to be able to afford that, but until some things happen, I don't think so. I do think certainly four percent could be feasible, you know. certainly 4% could be feasible, you know. Again, a 3% is a kind of a safety situation kind of way we budgetize. So, you know, that's, that's totally up to y'all as far as discussion is concerned.
So as far as our teachers are concerned, there's nothing, just their step only. Nothing above the step.
Right, it is.
It is, doesn't affect them at all. I just remember in the past, we've done it at the same time.
I've slept since then.
All right, so recommendation? Who do you want to recommend?
Yeah, I'm making it, y'all. I mean, I, I, you know, I really don't have a.
You're thinking, the 3% is where we're going to go.
I'll take them off the hook.
Yeah.
I'd like to recommend that we.
You make a motion.
Make a motion that we give a 3% raise to the people that would be affected by it in the report presented by Mr. Yandel.
There we go. We got a second for that.
I'll say it there.
All right, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, there we go. Now let's talk about the shared service.
Okay, this item, I know in looking at this, you probably had thoughts.
What in the world is this?
This is a contract we go into, an SSA arrangement. We've had this for years. It's the Longview Regional Day School for the Deaf. And basically, school, it's, it's an extremely expensive situation to provide services for these youngsters if a district is to provide everything that is needed, because personnel costs will be quite extensive. And we've always partnered with Longview ISD with this, and as you can see, many, many other districts in the area do that, partner with Longview ISD. And they are the ones that hire the, they have the personnel and all that will meet the needs of these. And then districts contract with them. And there was just slight changes in the agreement this year, which actually benefited the school districts such as ourselves, and how much, you know, was paid for that. And this goes through our SSA that we're the fiscal agent of, our SSA with Special Education with Platteau and Spring Hill. This also travels through them. So this is something that's been in place for years, that there is, as I said, a bit of upgrade to it that benefits each of the districts that go into this shared service arrangement. And there's, just to let you know, there is no way possible for a district to afford this on their own, you know, the size of, of our district. So my recommendation is to approve the local agreement that as presented with the Longview School for the Deaf.
Okay, we get a motion? Ms. Pickle, get a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay.
Okay, Mr. Yandel, you go ahead and say it, Kevin.
I just want to screen this.
No, you have to twist it.
Twist it?
If you twist it. I've been twisting over here. If I twist it.
No.
It doesn't help? It helped me when I twisted. If I twist, I get this.
If you imagine, I can.
We're arranged.
I did this minute. When the Affordable Care Act is put into place by the mom administration, one of the clauses, and it was that the provider of health insurance plans have the effective plans affordable to the employee, and they put in the plan, in the Affordable Care Act, the complicated formula, that, that means that we have to accept our district's contribution so that the employee's share of the, our lowest plan for the employee only is what they consider affordable to the employee. Up until this year, our, the level of our employees are, which would be our custodians and some of our child nutrition workers, the level of pay was just high enough to where our district's $225 a month contribution toward the one, Plan 1HD employee only was enough to where we didn't have to raise the district's contribution. This year, when they raised the premium on that plan by $10, in order for us to remain compliant with the Affordable Care Act, we need to raise our rates by $5 for the district's contribution to the plan. I had done a comparison, if the district had done just a 2% raise, then our lowest employees would have gone from $9.3 an hour to $9.88 an hour. And in order for us to remain compliant, that, that would, that would keep us in compliance. Since you're going to a 3% raise, that brings those employees to $10.05 an hour, which would mean that instead of a $5 a month increase, we would only have to do a three-month, a $3 a month increase. But when I did an analysis, just a ballpark analysis of it, even with $5 a month increase for the employees that it's impacted, for the general fund, you're talking, what, $6,000 that we're increasing the budget by. So even though y'all did approve a 3% increase for group of employees that includes this class, I would still recommend that the board approve increasing the district's percent, increase in the district's monthly contribution from $225 a month to $230 a month. And that is included in the budget proposal without the raises.
What you proposed already included that $6,000 block.
Correct.
All right, so we get a motion?
Yes, we have to restate all of that?
No.
No, man.
Give our recommended by chat. Have you got that?
Go on.
Okay.
I like the $2.25.
Five additional dollars in the compensation to, towards their insurance.
All right.
Thank you.
I'll split the last songs.
Yeah.
It's the last thing.
We get a second. Any, any discussion? All in favor? All right, that puts us in closed session at 7:30.